Ok. Ok, então... Começando do início, porque resulta que eu não estava gravando... Então, hoje estamos discutindo Void Heart Symphony, um jogo de Ufo Press, do dono da empresa, então, de Jay Isles. Ela é uma das designers mais interessantes para Power by the Apocalypse. A linha de jogos dela, de World of Legacy, são alguns dos meus jogos favoritos dentro da Power by the Apocalypse dinastia, digamos. E hoje vamos fazer uma sessão de estudo que... Podemos aprender juntos as intricâncias do jogo. Não estamos aqui exatamente para ir ao desenho de regras, porque a filosofia dessas sessões de estudo é que você vai se enganar. Todo mundo se engana pela primeira vez que vai jogar o jogo. Ok, todo mundo espera isso. Você vai se enganar a segunda vez, a terceira vez, a quarta vez. Você está jogando um jogo por meses e meses e ainda vai surpreender você. E isso está bem. A pergunta é: você se fechou para aprender o jogo se você não obtive uma compreensão básica do jogo? Se você não entende o que as regras vão evocar, qual é o estado do jogo, como você pode realmente ser um fã dos jogadores? Como você colabora para construir a história e quais ferramentas o jogo te apresenta? Então, a ideia detrás dessas sessões de estudo é ir em geral, obter cinco pontos-chave que vão te permitir jogar a sua primeira sessão com o maior permisso que você possa para se enganar, porque haverá esses cinco elementos que são verdadeiros para a ideia do jogo, para os experimentos que o jogo quer criar, que você pode desenhar, você pode improvisar, você pode usar as regras de outros jogos. Mas assim longe que você estiver disso, você está dando aos seus jogadores a experiência que eles esperam. E você também está colocando você em uma posição em que você pode realmente aprender do jogo e descobrir como você mesmo pode realmente jogar o jogo melhor. Então, não estamos aqui para ensinar alguém, estamos aqui para aprender diferentes pontos que podemos melhorar individualmente. Essa é a ideia detrás dessas sessões de estudo. E a razão pela qual eu escolhi a Void Heart Symphony é triunfal. Primeiro de tudo, World of Legacy é uma família de jogos que tem uma reputação de ser extremamente complexos e difíceis de entrar, mesmo para pessoas que são usuários para jogar Power by the Apocalypse. Essa reputação é... Principalmente sobre expressa, ela vem principalmente da estrutura de jogo diferente que ela tende a ter comparada com outros jogos PBT8. E vamos abrir isso mais tarde, especialmente algo que vamos voltar aos pontos-chave e conclusão da sessão de estudo. A segunda parte é que, no real, eu estava bastante seguro de que esta era já a versão final das regras. Resulta que, na verdade, Jay Isles ainda está trabalhando na versão real final. Mas, desde o que eu preparo já em avanço para este estudo, eu acho que podemos ao menos obter os fundamentos para nossa primeira sessão de Void Heart Symphony dos regras que eles são. E isso nos fica bastante bem, porque não pretendemos ir muito profundo nos regras. E o terceiro é, bem, eu realmente gosto do que este jogo quer fazer. É um jogo sobre realidade adolescente. É um jogo de fantasia urbana, de ir em um domínio supernatural. Mas, ao mesmo tempo, é um jogo que reconhece as condições materiais. Reconhece que as pessoas jovens são construídas não apenas pelas posições em que estavam, que são projetadas para elas sob expectativas ressonáveis, enquanto não sendo dadas as medidas para abrir elas, enquanto, ao mesmo tempo, há essa imune presença de ideias de neoliberalismo que mata a imaginação. E o elemento de supranatural, na verdade, evoca a ideia de... florescer às ilusões do capitalismo, cavar para o fim da mentalidade da história e, por ultrapassar o que é real, esse capitalismo-realismo em que todo mundo está imerso, essas pessoas jovens são realmente capazes de inactuar em mudança e que são capazes de reforçar suas próprias conexões com os outros que foram alienados. Eu acho que há um potencial muito forte para gameplay muito poderoso, para ficção muito poderosa que pode ser criada entre jogadores que eu acho que este jogo faz muito para explorar. E, claro, sou um grande fã das series Shin Megami Tensei e o jogo traz muito deles. E como ponto de bônus, para cada passo que Atlas e outras empresas similares fazem, eles tendem a fazer duas voltas e podem ser muito reacionais e regressivos em seus jogos. E isso é realmente uma opinião muito aberta e inclusiva sobre esses tipos de ficção. E é, honestamente, o tipo de gameplay interseccional que queremos. Nós só faremos melhor se tivermos mais jogos com Void Heart. Então, geralmente, a primeira coisa que começamos analisando é o que este jogo está sobre. Então, apriori nós sabemos duas coisas: é um jogo de Power by the Apocalypse e é um jogo de World of Legacy. Agora, para qualquer familiar com uma ou das duas, isso imediatamente conjura uma imagem, mesmo se é bastante sem sentido para outras pessoas. O jogo faz um grande trabalho em expandir e vender sua experiência. E imediatamente, pelo blurb, o jogo vende por si mesmo muito claramente. E eu acho que isso é realmente um bom... um bom template para o que um jogo deveria ser. Como o jogo deveria se vender, como o jogo deveria estabelecer tom, expectativas e como realmente colocar todos no tableiro no mesmo nível da conversa. Só pela introdução do jogo e o blurb que estabelece a premissa, Void Heart Symphony deixa praticamente claro o que o jogo está sobre e o breaks it down into three important pieces of information. Não precisa ler através do livro. Imediatamente, esses três parágrafos te dizem tudo o que você precisa saber. Nós, imediatamente, são dito que o jogo é cooperativo, que é sua história. Então, mesmo pessoas que são novas aos jogos de role-play sabem o que vão fazer. Eles te dizem quais são os seus caracteres. Você está jogando Rebels. Alguém que tem visto algo que a ficção imediatamente estabelece como o castelo. E este castelo parece ser uma força invasora, se espalhando pela cidade e colocando o poder deles em navios predatorios. Vocês, jogadores, decidiram lutar contra eles. Você luta, mas no processo, você é infectado pelo mesmo Vóide que empoderam o castelo. Então, estabelece que o gameplay... Então, depois de explicar quem você é como jogador, quais são seus caracteres e qual é a luta deles, imediatamente, ele te diz o que você espera fazer neste jogo. Isso é muito importante. Muitos dos jogos dizem o que você está jogando como e eles meio que se enganam sobre o que exatamente o jogo está sobre e o que você realmente acaba fazendo no jogo. Fora minha mente, dois exemplos saem. Por exemplo, um Vampire the Masquerade ou qualquer linha de vampiros. Você sabe, você joga um vampiro. Está suposto a ser sobre, você sabe, a dualidade entre besta e homem e como viver como uma criatura morta, brincando com a faca. Mas então... O jogo realmente não diz como você joga isso. E em vez disso, você tenta apenas ser um super herói escuro. Você tem todos esses bons jogos e essas boas capacidades de combate e o jogo continua te dizendo: "Ei, ei, por que você não usa essas boas funções?" Yeah! Enquanto, por exemplo, a ficção basicamente reduz o jogo a ser... Bem, vocês são todos um monte de superpoderes e não estão lutando uns pelos outros para se tornar o governante da cidade. E o jogo não é exatamente aberto, bem, a maioria das vezes, não é exatamente aberto em o que você é e que você realmente joga. Mas isso é muito importante, porque... esses parágrafos estabelecem imediatamente o que o jogo é e como será jogado. O jogo vai envolver duas investigações. O castelo invai a cidade. Está começando a inactuar em mudança e está empoderando navios. E esses navios vão tentar explodir as pessoas na cidade, estabelecer hierarquias e criar essa máquina de alimentação que só take tudo que é bom, bom em mundo e sefona-lo aos navios, ao castelo e para alimentar o inânecito greed e apetite do Vóide. Os Rebels, os jogadores, você precisa lutar contra essa invasão. E você começa aprendendo o que você pode, encontrando a identidade do navio, encontrando exatamente o seu domínio dentro do castelo e atacando de volta. E eventualmente, isso está suposto a se acostumar em um ciclo. Então, você vai à investigação, você vai ao castelo, você tenta se conectar com a cidade, com as pessoas que você conhece, tenta recuperar, tenta obter novas funções, tenta lidar com a conexão com o Vóide. Há uma nova investigação, você vai de volta e para trás, e assim por diante, e assim por diante, e assim por diante. Então, o jogo, na verdade, o blurb te diz um trabalho muito bom não apenas diz o que o jogo diz o jogo está sobre e o que o texto do jogo realmente diz. Essas duas coisas são praticamente sinônimos nesse caso, é por isso que eu considero este jogo tão bem escrito. E Jay Isles tende a fazer isso em todos os Legacy games. Provavelmente, o que não é tão conciso tem que ser Legacy: A Vida entre Ruínas, principalmente por conta de quantas direções você pode tomar nesse jogo. E mesmo que haja três frameworks-chave, mas há uma boa introdução. No real, o jogo faz um grande trabalho em te ensinar como jogar. O jogo tem uma configuração muito bem planeada. Você não precisa completamente completar seus caracteres e você imediatamente começa a lutar um dos navios no castelo. Então, você imediatamente começa com uma abertura forte, ensina tudo o que você precisa sobre combate e envolve você com o navio como alguém que ouve cada um de vocês de diferentes maneiras, dá você recomendações de como criar o primeiro navio e põe você de volta imediatamente. Então, a primeira sessão, antes de você ter qualquer... qualquer escolha sobre seus caracteres, fica lá. Enquanto você ainda está aprendendo o sistema, o jogo faz um excelente trabalho guiando você e introduzindo elementos-chave sempre que eles são necessários. Isso assure que você não estará perdido no que fazer na próxima sessão, o que já desliza muito o peso se você estiver jogando o jogo. O que leva você a focar nas coisas que você pode se enganar, normalmente em termos de tom, reputação, de o que exatamente é o vibe que o jogo está indo, como as mecânicas do jogo favorecem certa experiência e como você reforça elas, e assim por diante, e assim por diante, e assim por diante. Então... O jogo está realmente fazendo nosso primeiro ponto muito fácil. E geralmente, um tem que ir mais fundo no jogo para realmente ter a noção de como o gameplay, o que você está suposto a fazer. Então, nós meio que podemos ir um pouco selvagens. E nós entramos no texto, entramos nos movimentos. Este é um jogo PBT8, então, como você espera, é dirigido principalmente por movimentos. Para aqueles que não são familiares com os jogos PBT8, há muita discussão de exatamente o que faz um jogo PBT8. Muitas pessoas acreditam que está tomando o jogo como uma conversa ongoing, que é o sistema de movimentos, que está organizando o jogo por planos, que é o forte foco em time e género. E, para ser justo, todo mundo está escrevendo de alguma forma. Mas, na verdade, é uma coisa comum entre muitos... ou por Power by the Apocalypse que você tem movimentos. E... a analogia entre... entre movimentos é... que eles são basicamente... que eles são basicamente o caminho para interpretar a ficção. Então... É um caso comum de jogo Power by the Apocalypse que... que sua intenção em suas ações, de seus caracteres, que a ficção ou posição é, ultimamente, o grande imperativo. E você está apenas escrevendo o que seu caráter faz, o que vai na mente deles, o que eles tentam alcançar com a maneira que eles agem. E esse resultado é decidido, ultimamente, por um movimento. É assim que muitas das ideias básicas de movimentos de Power by the Apocalypse funcionam. Com diferentes jogos, tomando diferentes abordos para... para movimentos. Por exemplo, você vai ver alguns dos movimentos que temos aqui e não vamos perder muitas tags, basicamente, você tem duas classes de movimentos. Você tem movimentos que você usa na cidade, que, vamos voltar a isso novamente, mas, basicamente, esses são movimentos em que... você meio que entra em anonimidade. É esse estranho, baseada em identidade consumista, em que você está praticamente vivendo vidas anônimas, em que todo mundo mais próximo pode estar vivendo suas vidas. E é por isso que parte da estabelecimento da sua identidade está nas ações de Valin. E nesse caso, não é seu caráter, o que eles podem fazer ou o que eles não podem, o que realmente importa, não são suas habilidades, é o seu aprendizado. São as restrições da sociedade impuestas a eles. E, basicamente, em cada movimento que se move, em movimentos, há a carga e estresse que a sociedade coloca em você e sempre que você faz um movimento, você está lutando com esses pressões. Você tem diferentes fontes de estresse, que iremos em detalhes mais tarde, que são basicamente sangue, infame, hit e filthy, que representam diferentes formas em que a sociedade pode limitar a sua capacidade de agir. E sempre que você quer fazer algo, haverá um movimento que estabeleça uma resposta adequada. Por exemplo, se você quer ser notado quando você está fazendo algo ilegal ou você está apenas tentando não dar atenção a si mesmo, você tenta, você não escreve o que seu caráter faz e você tenta passar por isso sem notificação. Então, você vai verificar contra infame. Você vai pegar dois desses parágrafos, você só vai rodá-los e se você rodar acima de sua infame... bem... sua infame não é tanto que acertadamente impede, mas se você falhar, você pode obter uma hit ou uma miss completamente. E geralmente, uma hit fraca vai colocar você numa situação complicada ou deixar você suceder com o custo, enquanto uma hit forte geralmente dá o que você quer, não é problema. Miss tende a colocar você em uma posição pior do que antes porque abre você para uma reação do game master. E é quando o castelo ou a cidade ataca. And that's when the castle or the city strike back at you. And we have a bunch of moves built around that philosophy for mundane moves. Then we have castle moves. Castle moves are the opposite. While on the city moves, you are constrained by the, by the perspectives of society and literally anyone else that will be put on your life and on the same pressures will be subjected to those and their chances of success pretty much depending entirely on that. Castle moves are about how you are as an individual, how capable you are, and how do you perform within the castle. These tend to be more familiar to exploration or combat moves. These use your skills, which they are going to be swords, wands, coins, and caps. And basically, they determine how well you fight, how well you find things, how you navigate the castle, and so on, and so on. So basically, you have the moves overall divided in these two phases. You have the moves that everyone shares that are shaped by your limitations, and you have the custom moves that allow you to use your skills on the castle so that you can use the power of the Void to change the castle and draw it open yourself, perhaps even to change the material conditions back in the city. Or at the very least, to stop the vassal. And I was going into this tour about the moves because I wanted to talk about what to me I found is the, what the game is really about. So we know we have these two moves, we have these two cycles of play between city and castle. And you are playing rebels. You're stopping the invasion of the castle and you're facing off against vassals all while trying to survive, to stay healthy, and to not let your mental health degrade under the constant assault of neoliberal nightmare. So are you stuck on this system? You're always gonna be investigation reacting when the castle comes back? No. There is key moment. Whenever you defeat a vassal, when the true power and two way in which players actually have agency to create significant change. It's a very special move that is activated when you defeat vassal. Called rivers in the desert. Me, this is what the game is about. Everything in the game is so that you can constantly activate this move. Everything you do is with the eyes on this prize. You suffer the indignities of the city. You establish new connections. You fight vassals. You delve into the castle. Because rivers in the desert, you can bridge through the limitations imposed by you. You can seize power and in a very focal way use the inherent violence of this power to force change. And of course, this is not without issues. So let's go through this move, a move that I considers the core element of the game, what everyone is chasing. And whatever you, when you are game mastering, you should be keeping this as what you are ultimately leading your players to, that they don't end up frustrated or lose themselves in the constant grind of life on the late-stage capitalism. When you defeat the vassal's avatar, the power Dev Gatorid is yours to control, to bring new life to this city. You, based on your connection to the Void, take turns choosing. You can reform the vassal. They admit their role in the exploitation of their fellow of the fellow people. They, they will step down of the hierarchy system that they have and they will make preparations for what they damage during the investigation. This protects you from retaliation from the from the castle as they are their focus distracted between yourselves and the vassal turn code. You can focus in urban renewal. So the castle is gonna be constantly screwing over with your city and it's always, always, always gonna hurt the most the people that are on the most fragile condition. It will always be the marginalized folks. It will always be the poor. It will always be the unseen masses. It will always be the workers that are gonna be mostly hurt by the hierarchy and the dark feudalism that the vassals and the castle create. So you can use rivers in the desert to strike back. You can pick a neighborhood of the city and describe how you push the castle off of it. How you bring the opportunities into the place? How the community regains control of their livelihood? How, how a black block rises? How people gain more control of ownership of their workplaces? Unsmile things in which common wisdom or the way of the world or that's just not how things are done have poorly served. You repel the influence of the castle and the people are able to live in new meaningful ways. And benefit that you get from this is that you develop new connections or further your own connections within the city. So reinforcing the sense of community instead of remaining alienated from the world as you were on the precarious conditions that you started. And you start to build a base of solidarity. You can always invest in healing. This removes a long-term affliction, be it social, economic, physical, spiritual, etc. From you or one of your connections. And this gives you a bit more selfish approach on that, but it's still ultimately about deepening relationships and assuring that the people that you care about are able to survive on hellish reality. You can even more selfish and you can dispropriate. You rise in station, use the power of the castle so that you improve your own lot in life. I mean, this can be seen as a bit of being a class traitor, as you know, as you sacrifice the raw potential of the workers of a liberated or urban-renewed place or a covenant that is healed. And instead of using that to bring new life, you seize it, and it's selfish. Again, so might see you as a class traitor. You might just see it as upward mobility or, you know, my ability to dwell in life is gonna be affecting how I face the castle and that is gonna have better repercussions for everyone. It's gonna tickle down, and so on, and so on, and so on. You can sell the fiction as you want. And the question is if you are able to convince others and more important, if your character is able to convince themselves and live with this. You can also expand your base of operation. So basically, it is a more specific version of urban renewal in which basically you, you are home turf, you are improving it. And basically, instead of having new ties, you have different amenities that are gonna be used by you or your contacts or the neighborhood. You can also create an encounter. You a connection that you don't know or want to know better, they will just appear on your safe haven and reveal their true nature, which is good if you are a plus of more people, maybe for the next investigation, you want to widen out your reach. So this is also a good option. Now, all those things that have benefit, probably some are better on certain situations, some are more selfless and more selfish than others. There's always a price. You are drawing from the from the power of the castle, more precise, from the power of the Void, from the dark and tropic forces that surrounds the world and just resists to drain everything of worth from. You draw this power, you reinforce your connection to the Void. And it raises in rank. And the first thing that this is gonna do is gonna make you less loyal to other rebels. And that vassal that you stole the power from is permanently sealed away from the power of the castle, for good or for ill. And it could be adventurous to have a reforming vessel once again tapping these energies, but that possibility is now gone. So this is ultimately what you're gonna do. Gonna risk yourself, risk hurt, violence, social, physical, mental, economic form against yourself and the city, against your connections, your covenant. You're gonna brave the castle, gonna slowly prove more and more connected to the Void. And ultimately, you stop the bastard that is reigning your city, one last servant of the castle, and you take its power and you not change. But ultimately, receiving that power changes you and brings you closer to the Void. The question is, how much power can you take? And how willing are you from relinquishing and abdicating of this power? This dynamic, chasing the rivers in the desert, gonna create this conflict between seeking power, which is very common when you play games, and abdicating power. And rivers in the desert is the most obvious example, in ultimate pinnacle, but there are a lot of simple structures across the game that reinforce this duality. So if you are running your first game, you just go through the guidelines that, that were written for us. You just go through these simple seven steps and we have a great first session. We follow ourselves with most of the rules. We try half of the moves or so, perfectly. But if we are already aware from the beginning of this duality that everything on the game invokes about seeking power to depose and absorb the vassals, but the consequences of yielding these powers and ultimate test of the virtue of abdication, we can create pretty early on lamp-shading future decisions, future dilemmas and future challenges. So this is always very good to even during the early sessions to start establishing these conflicts and dilemma. I think that if you, if you internalize this basic conflict that there is on Void Heart Symphony, you're gonna create very satisfying a game experience even if you don't interact with most of the subsystems of the game or even if you take a longer time to actually try the different rules. So, we pretty much find out with this what the game is about. So the next question is would be, what is the game engine? So we're gonna open the hood of the game and try to understand how the game keeps itself running. Now, the game is pretty well-designed and has a very good understanding of how to transmit its idea. And if you see the game as a conversation, it's pretty clear what it wants to do. You should be talking, apply the scrubs in action. The fiction establishes a course. So if the fiction, fiction leaves pretty clear what should happen, then that happens. Then we ground the results on the fiction and we go back into the conversation. If the outcome is not so clear, if this is something that the fiction still has not established, we ask ourselves if this is something that the move would solve. You go through the moves, mundane, castle moves, special moves from different playbooks. Is there anything that will fit this? Yes, then we solve the move. We roll the dice or not, as needed. We make the choices. We can spend or get hold. That's basically more on economies of the game, which we'll not be getting into the study session. It's the kind of things that you don't need to mess up on the first sessions. And you can learn on your pace and maybe find your way to handle it. You ground the resulting fiction and you go back. So on the first session, we're probably gonna solve a lot of things just on not being a move or actually does not have repercussions. Of course, the main limitation here is that even if there's probably a move, you're still learning the game. You might not be aware of all the moves for every situation, so that's okay. As long as you keep an eye out to any move that would really fit that. And the good thing is that the primary that for the first session and the first encounter with the vassal is pretty good at establish which moves to use when. So even the step, which is often one of the bottlenecks when playing a P V T A game, especially more etrodox ones, is when it's a case for a move or not, that part is pretty eased by those guidelines. So that's doing play. That's the conversation, that's the back and forth. And then the game, the other engine is the more meta one. So this is the cycle of play that you're gonna be going through. The game master is gonna enter those vassal. And investigation is gonna start. Player is gonna go around. They're gonna try to find things about the vassal and as things happen, the clock of the vassal starts feeling. The clock is basically how close the vassals are to start implementing their plan, spreading their influence. And basically, they get to strike back at the players or at the city. And if it feels darkness falls, basically, it was a victory for the castle and then there will be a downtime before a new investigation starts. So it's going to be a loss for So it's going to be a loss for the city and for the rebels. But on the process, while the fight is still undecided, uh the rebels, they can go into the castle. They can fight the different minions and enforcers of the of the vessel, try to find uh what is their core of power within the castle. To get tokens, uh basically symbols of uh of of affection, of connections that they have to the world, of their own personality. Or just very central symbols of their identity. And gather them so that you can use them back against the the vessels. You can probe their strengths in the mundane world, you can see how the castle influences their uh their modus operandi, you can check what exactly they 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 wanted even before they came into contact with the castle, what are their mundane resources, how well connected they are to the figures of authority and so on and so on. Uh and you can just take a break and tend to the mess in your own life, which is something that is gonna always keep happening, as you are again still living during neoliberal late capitalist nightmare. So there's always bills to pay, there's always obligations that you have. Every single element of your time has to be monetized or useful to a third party in some way and so on and so on and so on. So you always have that pressure. This is gonna to get you away from the two actually more useful for the investigation ones. But as this that happening and as the clock keeps feeling, you keep going investigations and when you are ready, you fight the vessel. As long as their clock still is not full. And you fight the vessel. You wanna defeat them. Uh and you're gonna do rivers in the desert. And then you're gonna have a downtime as there is some peace as the castle weakens. Until there's a new vessel coming and you must start the cycle over and over again. So this is the engine of the game and as you can see, it's a very procedural uh engine. Basically, you have the conversation and the investigation cycle is gonna guide most of of the base thing, but this system is often reinforced. It's not, for example, like Blades in the Dark has a very linear system. You do a job, downtime, do a job, downtime, do a job, downtime. Here in this case, it blurs a lot because you have no overall urgency other than the clock. So a lot of things that would otherwise be a downtime, uh they can help you during the investigation. You can take breaks on exploring the castle, you don't have to explore the castle a single time. You can find minions at different times, you can keep coordinating between the mundane investigations and more exploration, etc., etc. So you have a lot of uh of um freedom in this structure. And the reason why the game is designed this way is because of the confidence that the game has on its secondary and tertiary ways to nudge you to that direction. And this is what really shows J L's brilliance. Because she does not have a single framework to keep you going back to that, no. You have a lot of things that feed into that. First of all, is the specter of scarcity. Or our oppressors dictate the terms of rebellion. Because of the ways that moves work in the city, which you are limited not by what you are capable to do, but by the constraints that society imposes upon you. They are setting the terms of the ways in which you have to fight them. Basically, society inflicts violence upon your character and that violence establishes the means through which they can strike back at this unjust hierarchy. So this manifests as stresses. Uh again, you're gonna have these different stresses and you're gonna keep getting getting it inflicted upon you as you try to fight off against the castle, as you keep investigation, or just the attrition of suffering through your life. That's gonna happen over and over and you're gonna be constantly tested on those. And this gonna push you to go faster in the investigation. You need to get this done or e or otherwise it's gonna push you into projects. And if you push into projects, you start to find ways to cope it. And you get either uh progressive uh projects which try to give you an edge, something that can help you. Or you can do a defensive project, basically because the society is constantly attacking you, attacking your stress, attacking your needs. You prevent yourself and those dear to you and your community from the worst of the harm. And these things, even these projects, they are constantly over attack. And you're gonna be suffering the effect of the green. Every time investigation starts, even if everything was fine, there's always a way that capital is gonna extract a little edge off of you. Just a bit more. And that is gonna keep attacking you here. So apparently you only have the you only have the pressure of the clock of the vessel, but you actually have all this stress that you're gonna be trying to resist. Uh on a system that is very remissioned of spire and iron sword, but it says it's very good twist and basically you're gonna be always trying to outrace this, trying to lower them whenever possible. Again, one of the ways that you can do this is rivers in the desert. And you get rivers in the desert if you defeat a vessel. So you have another incentive to go into that. Then we have the actual mess in the castle, which gonna hit you hard. You're gonna get shot. Uh and whenever you get shot, you get shot uh shadow and through whenever you get shadow, you get polar powers, you get stronger, but you also get a stronger connection with the castle. But you also risk getting hurt more and more if you you risk keeping those wounds after you leave from the castle to the real world. So if you push yourselves through the castle blindly because you are pressured in the real life to do so, you're gonna be risking that. But you have to do that because the ways you can do manage this are also related to rivers in the desert. So this keeps going on and on and reinforcing you. So even if you have this procedural element, which you should keep in mind, you don't need to enforce this at all. You just need to recognize that this is what everything on the game feeds on it. This is what I consider an example of intuitive, simplistic, redundant design. That knows very well the type of stories it wants to create. Makes very clear to everyone at the table and everyone reading the book that this is what the game is about. And again, pushes this race for this structure. And ultimately pushes the same dualism between seizing power and abdicating power. And the transformations that you can enact while you are holding to that power. But ultimately acknowledging that this power does not belong to yourself. And the constant reminder to that is the void. The void is the one bad connection on the game. Uh you have different connections to the game, which we're gonna go on the later point. Uh and the void is the only bad one. Whenever you draw from the power of the castle or the rivers of desert, or you sacrifice the well-being of someone uh while going to the void, you're gonna increase your void. And this gonna mess you up. You're gonna gain quickly a lot of black marks in filthy. So you're gonna be alienated from your fellow comrades. You're gonna lose your connections to the others where rebels. And how can you erase this? Do you give up power and authority willingly? Really? So we have a contradiction created by this dilemma, that you need power to enact change because society forces you to seek power outside of the paradigm. Because of the same, very same hierarchies, it establishes to control you. However, if you don't do that, if you let yourself embrace by the void, if you don't learn to appreciate the virtue of abdication and you hold power and you are not willing to give it up to the the to exert the evolution and return that power to the community and the people to which it was stolen from, you are becoming more and more alienated from your fellow rebel and from your fellow enemy. Ultimately, you're gonna become uh just another minion of the castle, just another vessel that is perpetrating these unfair hierarchies that keep everyone in chains and keep feeding the void. That is how the contradiction inherent to the duality resolves itself. Rivers in the desert, the investigation framework, conversation. And ultimately, resolving the relationship between the void and the world. This is the engine of Voidheart Symphony. We've gone through the engine. Now we get one of my favorite parts. Uh I always love look at the game and try to see, okay. This game is very competent, it does these things very well, it has this goal that proposes itself to do and it has these engines to which it arrives at this goal, but that's not the fun part. I mean, basic competence is the minimum that you expect from a game. Uh a good engine is just good design at the end of the day. This comes to my favorite element, which is secret sauce. That thing or things on a game that say, yes, this is why I play this game. Because ultimately, very rarely you play a game because it has a good engine. You scavenger good engine for the game that you want to play because of the special thing. And this game is the best secret sauce. And we touched briefly on it just when we mentioned the importance of the connections to the city and its people. To those oppressed by the vessels, by the castle and by the void. I'm talking about covenant. Covenants are a good way to codify relationships between characters and to codify them in an empowering way. I briefly touched that the the effect that you have of being constantly coerced and defined in which you can do on your mundane face by the restrictions imposed on society make your character live a kind of anonymous life. Almost like any other character, although some situations would live exactly the same life. Covenants by definition are rebelling against that. And they are definitely one of the most interesting elements of the game. And the covenants, they are inspired by the major arcana uh of the Tarot. Which again, if you played Persona, you know exactly what we are talking. As you know, uh the persona had different arcana, the arcana are the means through which all is revealed, etc., etc., etc. But Voidheart Symphony goes the extra mile. They use the symbology of their arcana to extrapolate the symbiotics and reappropriate them, liberate them. And whenever you establish a covenant, basically you discover a new relationship about another character. You discover another way to see them, which then you could defy through the covenant. And this can be a new uh a new non-play player character that you encounter. Uh a character that has already been established that you see under a new light. Uh or even a changing relationship and so on and so on and so on. Every arcana is basically an archetype of the relationships, of the place they feel on the city and their place, how they relate with rebellion. And you're gonna have different you're gonna have different ways to interact with your covenants. Usually your covenants, they can offer if super. Uh more often than not, they're gonna hell need help from you. Uh they're gonna offer conditional information. You're gonna have opportunities to improve your relationship with them and you're gonna have uh opportunities to let them down. All of these are important and all of these are good in fiction. Especially if you let them down, if you are for some reason risking a relationship with a covenant. It can cost you a relationship, but you always get a new memory about your relationship. So even that, one of the worst uh outcomes that you can have with the covenant, well, other than the the vessels and the castle lashing out against them. So it's gonna be one that establishes your relationship and that gives a better idea of what is at stakes, what the relationship between the characters, what is uh at stake for the city. Uh again, uh you're gonna have moves and fiction and trade-offs that gonna put you in situations which you see your covenants at their best or their worst. And you're gonna be more often than not going back and forth between these two. And each of them gives you quick guidelines to how this manifests. So this immediately creates a two-dimensionality to any character. So any NPC that you create, you already have the basic fictional position that you establish. Then you have the role-playing aids that are offered by their covenant. So this gives pretty good basis to establish meaningful NPC interactions, which often are the key for great storytelling. So not only you have the two needles to how most interactions should go, you also have ways to nurture this. You also have ways to nurture this covenant. Basically, the things that if you do, you're gonna increase your relationship. Or the trails, the things that if you do, you're gonna be risking your covenant. Uh, then you have different moves. Uh, you have a hangout move, which is basically, if you are in a downtime or taking time on your life. Away from the investigation. You know, not trying to survive in the city, not facing the castle. You can hang out with them, and each, each of them has a different hangout move. So if you go to the hanging man, you can tell them a dilemma you are facing. If you go to that, you can ask, uh. They're gonna ask you, uh, one of three questions. And then that allows you to further characterize your character, and so on, and so on. Each of them has a thing that can happen when you hang out. Having a covenant also opens you extra moves, which is great. More moves mean that you have more options. So you wanna have a city move. Basically, how having these connections on the city makes life under late-stage capitalism more bearable? Or makes investigations easier, or maybe both. And then you have a custom move. How drawing up in your connection to the void and your connection to these people. You are able to weaponize it against the shifting nature, nature of the void or the castle. Or the vessel. And this is one of the most important secrets. The, the potential of this. Of this covenant is almost endless. You're gonna have a lot from juice, from a campaign, just from these interactions. And how they interact with each other, and how having this covenant affects the overall dynamics of the rebellion. The raw potential of covenant is overwhelming. And it always makes feel that investing on com, uh, on, uh, on community. Investing in solidarity, investing in others is worthwhile. It's, well, it's not, it's not even worthwhile. It's better reward than anything that the void or the castle can offer you. All the lies of the dark fraudulism of the void, they pill through the. The rewards of establishing true connection or working together to improve one's lot. And ultimately, you have the two macro covenants. We have the world, which is basically how much progress you are making. In liberating the city, how much of the world. Can breathe easier knowing that the influence of the hierarchies of the castle are gone. And you have the void. The chains of hierarchy that suck everything to the bone and exploit everyone. And that's it to drag you to. So. This is a great sauce, I'm not lying. More games should learn from this and have. A system like this. Uh, this is in many ways is, well. They are on completely different scales, but this is on many ways. An evolution of systems like Fate, which uses aspects. Or Old Power Play Apocalypse, which defines things by tags. Uh, well, actually, it's, to me, it's more closer to actually to fellowship. Because it has a hybrid of two, you have aspects that give abilities. And you are also defined by the relationship that these characters have with the fellowship. And you can also use them. So, but this is definitely on a completely different scale. And between Voidheart Symphony and, uh, and Fellowship. Any game that does not use a similar system to give a strong presence. Meaningful interaction and strong support network on a game is missing a lot. Well, a social and community elements are part of the game, of course. It's kind of the assumption in making this statement. A lot of me care about that, and they should not care because it's the game is a lot. That's fine. It's fine. You want to establish a connu, uh, community, if you want to draw to the attention of social networks. And support networks. This is definitely a game worth studying. So. We know what we are here. We are rebels, we are fighting the system, we're gonna be kicking ass to vassals in the castle and inside of it. We're gonna flip the bird to the void, even as we seize its power and flip it against them. And we're gonna go through cycles of investigations as we grow in power. And we develop the connections that we have with other characters and the city. Have we gonna be hitting those story beats? Well. This is still a part of the apocalypse game, so an important element of story beats and striking them. Is what you bring to the table. So, let's start with the, the basic point, which will be the playbooks. So. The playbooks, they show different, uh, different archetypes for types of rebels. The leader. The. The arsonist. The caretaker. The one that is clearly being a shining example of the potential of renewal. And what we can do if, if we do not limited ourselves by the impositions of the reality of the city. You can be the, the one that is not quite like the others, the one that, uh. Is more like a mystical creature, or a being of the void, or a being of the castle, or who knows what. Uh, and we have the hacker. Basically, the one that is able to see through the castle, to see through the void and provide support. And. There's no troubles defining the icon. In the icon and Arlukin, they are pretty similar. Same ways they are people that rejoice on their role as rebels. The thing is, you have. And this on a very similar border by the apocalypse and mad manner, it gives you moves. Uh, each, uh, character has, uh, moves that they have on the castle. And they also have a shadow form. Now, the shadow form is basically your avatar during the castle, your source of power. Manifest through the shadows of the void. Uh, and that's basically how you could look full as hell. And you get special moves when you embrace your shadow. But there is another element to the. Playbook is your role, which is basically what you are in the society. What is, what are you tied to, how do you relate with the rest of the rebels? Which covenant are you? So you already start to take in these archetypes and your place in the world at the same time that you get the. Place in the team through your archetype. And you also have your mundane life, which, uh, establishes what you are lacking. And all of these, they have three basic categories of roles. Each of them has different vocations. Uh, and you have three types, you have delinquents, prodigals, and traitors. Uh, this is not very intuitive coming outside of the game. Uh, but, uh, delinquents are usually younger people, they are usually in high school. Between fifteen and twenty-five years old. And what they struggle with is that they have no agency. Uh, everyone keeps telling them what to do, how to live their lives. Uh, which norms to follow for them to achieve any success. Uh, whenever they try to act outside, uh, like say protesting against climate change, they are told that they should be in school. Whenever they try to, uh, learn a trade or to follow their vocations, they are taught to get. Something employable, to learn how to code, et cetera. So basically, with the thing that they struggle the most is having agency on their life. Their lives are constantly surveilled, and they have problems covering their own niche. Prodigals, they are not as limited, uh, because in a way, nobody cares about them. These are usually young professionals or older students. Uh, where their limitation is me, basically the world. The organization that was created by this hierarchy, be it mundane or by influence of the castle. Has no place for them, other than to exploit them. So they are always struggling to make ends meet. So their own limitation is providing for themselves. And this is gonna be the biggest limitation imposed on prodigals. Traitors, they are usually older, established people. Uh, they are told to lay down and that they're gonna get some scraps off the table. And unlike prodigals, for them it actually worked. And traitors, basically, they are able to make do, even get some comfort. Uh, la, uh, quiet lives, but their lack is their inability to feel empathy. To the, to the experiences of others, that, uh, you know, to. Believe blindly on the system as it works, to look aside to injustice. Basically, an overall lack in solidarity. So they must struggle in developing less consciousness and to connect with the other rebels. But overall, they don't, they are relatively comfortable compared to the other levels. But they must resist more than perhaps any of the others, the allure of just accepting the system as it is. And letting the void take them. So, still, may not be very intuitive. I created this mnemonic for me to focus myself. Basically, there are three roles. Zoomers, millennials, and Gen Xers. Zoomers are the delinquents. There's really no space to the world for them, everyone has an opinion of what they should do, they should respect their elders. And just wait until it's their turn on, once everything is doomed. Then we have the prodigals, they are the millennials, they are the unwanted. There is no space for them in the economic or social, uh, framework. All these structures that they, they were sold when growing up, that they would be there for them. That they saw their parents benefit from, they are just gone. They need to risk everything on their life, they are always. Within risk of losing whatever meager existence they have. Then we have the Gen Xers, the traitors. They still manage to get some of the comforts of baby boomers. Uh, they occupy middle positions, that some of them are quite wealthy. Some of them have managed to do well, and on average, they are protected from many of the troubles that seem to be. Burned by the younger generations. So they have a lot of incentives on keeping the system working. So this three mnemonic help put the coordinates of your characters. Both in the modern social dynamics and intergenerational conflict. And also on the, uh, economic realities of the challenges faced. Again, the link went, have problems, it's in their own agency. Uh, prodigals have problems making do with the little resources they have. And traitors, they have problems in criticizing the system. And, uh, contesting its, uh, unfair hierarchies on the behalf of others. And already this puts your coordinates pretty clear. As part of, uh, creation, you're gonna be establishing locations on the city, relevant to your role. For example, if you are a lawyer, you might, for example, make the corporate building for which you work for on the. A legal team, or a small practice that you do, or a courthouse, or where you spend most of the time. Uh, and so on, and so on, and so on, so. Already this is gonna keep very strong bits immediately open character creation. And from that, it's, it's still a PPTDA game, so. Let's have principles. And these are really good principles for the mood that the game seeks to inspire. Uh, there is the two strings of tension and catharsis. When you are in the city, there's always the rising tension, the increasing influence of the, the castle. The way which the city and the wheels of capitalism seek to grind you to dust. So we have this increasing tension, and then you break through. And you go into the castle, you seize the power, you enact change, and you get catharsis. To build up of tension during investigation, release tension during rivers in the desert. Accumulate tension in the investigation, release tension in rivers of the desert. Always rowing these two. Elements of the game. Of course, another very important principle is to begin and end with the fiction. When you trigger a move, it's because the fiction dictates, and when you resolve the move, you should end up back into the fiction. Because you don't do a move to do a move, you do a move to develop the fiction, that's all. And if you remember that, and you keep coming to that, you will have full control of the game. You will have the fun that everyone at the table wants to do, and will not be fighting the system. Even if you don't understand certain moves, even if you are not sure when to come up. If you always ground yourself on the fiction to look for a move, and on the fiction when you return from moves. You're gonna be able to sell the game through the first sessions until you learn it. Another very good one is showing the cost of using power to cut corners. Things get very weird, for example, when you lose the power of the void, uh, on your personal project. You are inviting weirdness into the city. Uh, things get very weird when you change, uh, grow in power. Uh, or when you vent and unleash shadow powers in the real world. So there is always the temptation to avoid a lot of the shit that society throws at you. But it never goes well. But again, because of the valves of the stress that constantly apply, you are more and more tempted. But you know. Those comes back to bite you in the ass, and worse. those comes back to bite you in the ass and worse, a lot of times it hurts other people more than you. Another very important one, which is especially good when you are portraying your vessel and you're not exactly sure how though to portray them. Because you know, you created their avatar on the shadow, their abilities and and what? And they also have a face in the city and that's it, how the two things connected. And this is something that is good to remember and a good principle to go back from. The vessel is not just, you know, a minion boss of the castle, just a noble in this dark feudalism, just a minion of the void, no. The city and the castle create the vessel. The conjugation of these two flow of energy create the antagonists that you see. We have someone that was created in an exploiter by the structures and hierarchies of late-stage capitalism in city. And that has been offered an opportunity to go beyond the normal venues of exploitation by the castle. And ultimately, what separates this capitalist bourgeois from the rest and what separates them from the mindless minions and enforcers of the castle is exactly the conflict between those. So you need to find what really defines them, what they want and have these things keep bleeding into their lives. Both in the city and in their avatars and their domains inside the castle. Another thing that is very important is not to just make those targets by the castle's exploitation just nameless victims, just fodder. Give them passions and drives and this is pretty easily done if you go into a covenant. But don't over-rely too much into the covenant. Give people passions that they wanted to do, drives and keep offering them opportunities to indulge into them and pursue them. Which will only make it worse when the vessel ruining the city keeps making things worse for everyone. Remember, these are people, they have lives. They also want to make things work for them. They just don't have the power of the castle to draw upon. But eitherly, they, again, they are pursuing this, they are also in this fight together. And what is the point of improving the base conditions of the city if it's not to allow more people to fulfill their passions and drives? This is what we are fighting for, right? And going back is go back that covenants must be cultivated with care. Covenants are not something that you extract value from and just discard people. It's something that must be groomed. It's something that must be tended. It's well, it's a blossoming relationship. Again, these people have passions and drives. They have been influenced by the castle in various ways. You're not supposed to go there and ruin their lives and abuse them even more. And any help they give you, it's a great sacrifice. So that you reciprocate and you cultivate this solidarity is very important. And covenant should be fully fleshed out and not just another source of power. Not just, you know, a good version of the void. Of course, then we have the classical, the classical Power by the Apocalypse. They talk to the rebels, not the players. Be a fan of the character, so keep putting them in testing challenges and cheer them on as they fail or they succeed. Keep letting them explore their story and be flexible with your responsibilities, know when to delegate. Don't try to just control the game and make the decision yourself. Know how to listen to the players and what story they want to do with their rebels, which changes they want to see in the city, in the castle and you know, we need help, you can always delegate. That's always a good rule, especially when you are learning the game. So we have pretty good fundamentals how to keep the stories beating. Another topics that come recurrent on other elements of the game is develop the villains more. As by you, you know, focusing on the enforcers, on the house of the castle of the vessels, on their personal affectations. Keep constantly putting pressure on the vessel's clock. So was that basically to set the pace of the game? It's usually the best way to control the pacing of the game without robbing agency and narrative control from the players. Let them take the actions that they want to. But whenever you want to give some urgency or give them a breather, just focus in manipulating the vessel clock. And with one that touches with fleshing out the people on the city is to keep involving the covenants and the people with the interactions of the players. Most often within the city, but that's not actually exclusively from the castle. Of course, there's a thing, this is not exactly a secret sauce from Void Heart Symphony. This is actually this is actually something that Void Heart Symphony got from its prequel, Rhapsody of Blood. Which, you know, if this is more like the Persona games, Rhapsody of Blood is more like Castlevania. But the thing that, another secret sauce that this game inherited and in a way makes even better is that this game has some of the best boss fights in all the history of role-playing games. I'm not even joking. The quality system in which you basically define a vessel by the qualities that they have, that then are tied to the castle. And each of those has its own specific moves and you need to create openings to exploit them. And you always go back and forth into creating opportunities, openings, putting yourself in danger, suffering blows, breaking down qualities. And every time you break down a quality, the combat changes drastically. Most of the abilities tied to qualities, they really complicate the fight. So at the same time, you're making progress, also the stakes of the combat escalate. Honestly, this, and the thing is, the game immediately dumps you in a boss fight. That's part of the procedure of the first session. The game is proud of its boss fights and for good reason. Again, they really are the best boss fights ever. I mean, anyone that has fought a difficult monster in most of the role-playing games, especially more trad games, is familiar to how much of a grind they can become. But again, this dynamic about openings and exploiting vulnerability keeps getting the combat interesting and rewarding new ways to approach combat. And the eternal changing circumstances of the qualities really, really put the dressing on the Yeah, I, I can barely even, it's, it's really good. It's easy to learn. The first example of the first session lets you build a vessel in the moment and it's pretty explicit on how to handle the fight. And the further fights only get better and better. So you always have that to look forward for. Not only you're gonna get the investigation to get a cool fight with the vessel, it's really going to be an epic, cool-as-hell fight. And you get the reward of rivers in the desert. So when they say that the catharsis happens in the castle, catharsis really happens in the castle. And you can really bring the pain to the vessels and bring payback for what they did to the city. Again, it's, that's really when you can go all out. So we hit all the four points. We know what we are playing. We know that we are playing rebels. We are pressured by society, limited in what we can do. But the castle that empowers our enemies also gives us the means of our own liberation. The engine is pretty solid and has both procedural conversational and meta-narrative elements. But everything from the scarcity mechanics reinforce it. And you always have the imminent plot of a touch of void, the advancing plot of the vessel and the many, many projects you can get involved to set the pace. We also should consume and consume and consume covenants in abundance and really rejoice on those boss fights. And if we keep to the very solid set of principles, if we develop both vessels and the covenants in the city and again, if we put, regulate the pressure of the game by manipulating the vessel clock, we're gonna be hitting all those story bits which the game is designed to hit. Finally, what can we take apart from this game? Imagine, I'm never gonna play Void Heart Symphony. I'm just appreciating it as a piece of art, a pinnacle of design, one of the best World of Legacy, now in PBTDA games. But then, what can I take home from this? Well, there's a lot of to take home because they are good of solid systems. The labyrinth mechanics on the castle, they are something that you can scavenge for something else. The stress mechanics, you can scavenge for anything which puts in situations to which your characters' abilities are not the most important. The duality of conflict, the all the small system from advantage to disadvantage and so on, and so on. You have all these small pieces that you can use and learn from and polish design, but ultimately, if you look at all those in a whole, you realize which is really the trademark design of J.I.O.L. Because as I mentioned at the beginning of the stream, her games of, no, not all of her games, she's also very good at creating micro RPGs, which again, we're gonna go full circle into this is the World of Legacy games. They are famous as being quite overwhelming and complex as Power by the Apocalypse games go. Which they are often compared with Fortune in the Dark, Blades in the Dark, Hacks. On that, which I think it's a bit fair because everything about Fortune in the Dark is complex because the rules are complex. You have a complex resolution mechanic that ties with a lot of fiddly things. While World of Legacy is a more elegant design. The complexity there is a kind of complexity that I really appreciate. The complexity does not come from intricate, complex, hard-to-learn, difficult-to-master roles. It comes from very simple self-contained system. If we go to the book and any of the, honestly, any of the legacy books, we can be overwhelmed by looking at y'all. But if we focus on one thing, we will quickly realize that it's as easy or easier to learn than equivalents on other Power by the Apocalypse games. For example, the stress system is way more simpler than to understand. They need their similar systems in Iron Sword and Spire. You focus on learning that and you learn that and it's simple. The move system is simple. Advantage and disadvantage are simple things to learn. The covenants are very simple, the way you interact. The health mechanics are very simple. The shadow and child mechanics are very simple. They're basically an XP system with more steps in between and that you can actually temper in both directions. Every single system is self-contained as you learn it. It's easy to understand the rules. To master. But then you put it next to the others. You can see how they interact. And don't focus into that. You'll move to the next thing you need to learn. To learn that. Simple, you have to master and it plugs together neatly. Before you realize, you are playing a very complex game with a lot of moving parts. But because you went step by step, you mastered very simple element, did not overload players at the table, took your time. You learned how to pull the levers to make the game do what you want. And it's a very good type of complexity and again, really betrays intentional clever design. And I think even if you don't do anything else, learn at least a legacy game enough so that you can run it. And most of these games have very good introduction. They can run you through one or two or three sessions. Just go through, interact with small parts of the game. And then you're gonna have a greater appreciation of how to organize a game of this scale building only on very simple blocks. And this is a very good lesson to learn as a designer. And also a very important lesson to learn early on so that you have an easier time learning the game. Which again, is the entire point of these thirty sessions. And again, this is a game where you focus step by step. You can interact only with one element or another. Slowly, slowly change focus. Complementalize the things as you get a further realization of how every moving piece hits. You're gonna have, you're gonna have an easier time learning. You're gonna enjoy yourself more. And you can focus in listening to your players and and I think that ultimately the big thing to take apart is the beautiful that there is working with very simple systems, very simple rules, working with redundancy and instead of focusing in mastering elaborate extravagant mechanics and systems and procedures or whatnot, just focus on mastering twenty or thirty simple systems and putting them together, making sure that they flow harmoniously. And I think this is a lesson to take home about during sessions in which you are overwhelmed and just focus on a place and downscale the situation as you compose yourself to design as when you start designing your own games. Instead of going immediately for the big complex engine system on your and whatnot, focus on step by step, on doing small things and then put them together on an actual complete indicate way. And when learning games, when you start reading a new game, instead of, you know, just going from cover to cover, try to break it down in small digestible pieces and, I mean, do what we do here. Find out the key critical points, master them and then take your time learning the rest. And yeah, that's our study session with Void Heart Symphony. Again, this is a Oofa Press game by J.I.O.L.S. And you can get it on their YouTube page. I recommend it, I recommend it, and I think great time into it. And I have heard final version is gonna be releasing soon. Get into it. But in this stream, I'm gonna do to see you around for another study session. And let's break apart another beautiful game that we're gonna be screwing up the next time.